Good evening, everyone. I have seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Uh, excuse me, Dr. Joel Schroder.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And I believe Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent. And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Pastor Gary Green from the Gospel Assembly Church in Bel Air to lead us in prayer. Pastor Green.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. God bless everyone. Let's all bow our heads in prayer. Gracious Heavenly Father, Creator of all good things, we're so grateful for people that want to serve for this council and for our honorable mayor. We're so thankful for a good community and all the blessings of life that you've bestowed upon us. Once again, we come before you at a time of difficulties and challenges. We pray that your wisdom, your divine guidance will lead us. We pray you'll help this council prepare this community for the future with all the wisdom, knowledge that comes from above. Help us all find solace, peace, and gratitude in knowing, God, you have never relinquished your throne. You are still on the throne. Fight, help us find peace in knowing you run the kingdoms of men of this world. You've never given your throne to any evil or any other entity of power. Find peace in knowing that your son, Jesus, still runs the church. So when things are allowed, when things happen, help us find peace in trusting you, knowing that your word tells us the righteous will flourish like the palm tree. We may have to bend, but we'll never break as long as we're pleasing you, working in your will, and according to the principles your holy word has given us. We serve you by serving each other. We love you by loving our neighbor. And we hold certain principles dear, and we hold you dear. So we pray your blessings upon this meeting. We pray, God, for all those suffering, all those that need your direct intervention. Right now, Father, may your presence sweep over them, protect. We pray, God, that you'll watch over us in all situations. In Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have two proclamations to read. Get somebody else to help. I'll do them both. Okay. So first one is American Red Cross Month, March 2022. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas March is the American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, take lifesaving courses, or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas we would like to remember those who help us, all of us here in Bel Air, Kansas, by giving their time to help their neighbor and thank our heroes, our volunteers, class thinkers, and financial supporters, who help us assist those in need. And whereas in the city of Bel Air, the American Red Cross works tirelessly through its employees and thousands of volunteers to help when disaster strikes, when someone needs a lifesaving blood, or the comfort of a helping hand. And whereas across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year and provides some 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians, collects and distributes about 40% of the nation's blood supply, and trains more than 7 million people in first aid, water safety, and other lifesaving skills every year. And whereas our community depends on the Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission, the American Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to those in need. Now, therefore, I, Jim Benage, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as American Red Cross Month here in Bel Air. The second proclamation is Severe Weather Awareness Week 2022. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas Severe Weather Awareness Week is March 7th through 11th, 2022. And whereas Kansas has experienced more federally declared disasters in recent years than any other state in the nation. And whereas each year brings a potential for violent weather to Kansas. And whereas large portions of our state include the, including the city of Bel Air, can be devastated by flooding, tornadoes, hail, windstorms, and other potentially dangerous events. And whereas the Governor's Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, have joined together urging all citizens to prepare for severe weather and to educate themselves on safe strategies. And whereas Governor Laura Kelly has declared the week of March 7th through the 11th, 2022, a severe weather awareness week in Kansas. Therefore, I, in official recognition of this statewide event, I, Jim Benage, Mayor for the City of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim March 7th to the 11th, 2022, Severe Weather Awareness Week in Bel Air. Do we move on to the next item? Do we have any agenda additions? Very now, I'll move on to items seven, Consent Agenda. So the Consent Agenda today contains amendments from the February 15th Regular Council Meeting and also includes four firework sales permits for 2022. City Code allows for no more than four permits per year to be issued, so this is all we will issue. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
A motion for Mr. Smith to approve the agenda, a second by Dr. Schroder. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item eight, Appropriation Ordinance. So this period includes $727,142 in bonded capital projects. And newly replaced police car has been upfitted for $14,537. Parts for the PD's new laptops have arrived and have been paid, and the laptops are still on order. Any discussion considering the appropriations ordinance 2004, 2204? Very now, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Schroder.
A motion to approve the Appropriations Ordinance 22-04.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Schroder and second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. So city requested appearances. We have several this evening. So the city received a grant. If the first one is K dot, is it T? Is that, did I pronounce T for T E A P?
Yes, but it looks like they didn't, were not able to make it tonight.
Oh, we do not have them here.
So I don't see them in the audience, so it looks like we'll skip that one, Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll skip that again. We had that on the plate for last time, too. Okay. All right, so the next item is to bring up Mr. Ken Garver. Who, the city hired Garver to complete a drawing, a drainage study in Aurora Park, Cozy Lane, and Arthur Heights. The study was completed, which identified needed upgrades to improve drainage as well as street conditions for these three areas. Council then asked Garver to create an estimate cost to pave and improve the drainage for these areas, as well as determine the estimated price per lot if the cost was special assessed. Ken Lee is here to share the results.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'm going to do is, there's a handout going around to y'all that's kind of a summary of the slides. And then I'm going to go ahead and I brought some extra copies, so if there's anybody in the group who's interested in having the summary. So we need to jump past this one. It's the wrong slideshow.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that one. Okay, so as Mayor Benage mentioned, we were hired to do a drainage study and as, based on some of the results of the study, one of the things that was asked is to put up together a cost estimate. And I had done one before with, with Ann where we had kind of more of a cursory look, but we were asked at a council meeting a while back or workshop to go ahead and present, to go into a little bit more detail, get contractor involved, and kind of make sure that we're using real world prices. And so we've done that, and I'm going to kind of run through the findings. And the three projects that are under discussion are Aurora Park, Hillcrest, and Cozy Drive. And each one of these projects has its own unique issues and situations as we've talked about before, but generally, they're all sand streets with open ditches, varying levels of dust problems, ditch problems, those type of things. And each one had, each one needs a different kind of look. So I'm going to start talking about our methodology. So what we did is we looked at each project, and we've done open ditch projects, we've done curb and gutter projects, we've done asphalt mat projects. So we, we used our experience that we have with that to kind of come up with the unit prices and typical items. And I will tell you that some of the quantities, we haven't done a full-blown design yet. So some of the quantities are, you know, kind of wave your hand at it based on years of experience, typical quantities based on the size of the project, to kind of come up with reasonable quantities for the contractor to work with us on and talk about prices. So it's this, this is a preliminary opinion of cost that is subject to change once the design is done. But we did try to be conservative in all of our design. So one of the things we looked at and we kind of alluded to in our other meeting is that Aurora Park is not well-suited to go to a curb and gutter project because of the large amount of flow that comes out of the lake there and just lack of grade. There's grading concerns. It would be extremely expensive. And so we were directed when we did our, our review here to focus on the asphalt mat alternative for Aurora Park. Cozy Drive and Hillcrest were both using the assumption they would be paved with curb and gutter with storm sewer improvements. And that's because they don't have the large flow issues. We don't have large pipe systems that'll significantly drive up the price on those projects. And then we, we did use the surveys that we performed for the drainage review to help us come up with quantities and determine the, the amount of some of the quantities on the project and the typical items. And again, like I mentioned, we have not prepared any design plans at this time. This is an opinion of cost. And then we were told to contact, work with some paving contractors, and Kansas Paving was the one that agreed to help us with it. You guys have seen their name on a number of different projects over the years that they just got approved to do the 47th Street Reconstruction Project. So they're familiar with what it takes to work in Bel Air. So we felt like they would be a good choice for helping us on the estimate. I'm going to start out, talk about Cozy Drive, and it's a, it's a sand street. The one thing of concern on this one is there is a big culvert that goes across the end of the cul-de-sac there. There's a lot of drainage that runs to that. So this project would eliminate all the existing ditches. The driveways, we replaced with concrete pavement to the property lines. Anything past that point would be the responsibility of the owners to, to do. They could work with the contractor, but it's, it's not common to run all the way to the houses as part of a public improvement. It's normal to pave it to the right of way. Beyond that is normally the owner's expense. And then they can decide whether or not they want to pave it or not. Our estimated construction cost just for the construction items was $310,000. The total project cost is $464,000. And that does, I don't have it listed here, but it does include contingencies, utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition, engineering staking and observation. That's kind of placeholder numbers. You would actually, if the project was selected to proceed, that number might go up or down depending on who you worked with on the project. Like, for instance, if we were to work on it, we've already done the survey, so we would, we would probably be able to be competitive on the cost side in that respect because we've already done some of the work out there. But it's kind of the, just using, if you were starting off cold with, from a cold slate, that's where you'd be. Again, as I mentioned, the, the culverts across the cul-de-sac are an important cost driver on this project. They're already impound significantly on the north side of that project. And our analysis, what we did is we, we, we looked at 10 lots that front the project. And because Tree Top has more frontage than most of the other lots, we would recommend that they pay two shares on, on the project, which would make for a total of 11 shares. And so the cost for each lot, as far as the residential lots, would be $42,000. And doing 20-year specials, 2.5% interest, that works out to $224 a month. So these are larger lots than normal, and that's a cost driver for the individual lots. Normally, paving on a project would probably run closer to $125 a month, maybe $150. But the downside to having really nice, large lots and large, large properties is, is you have more frontage to pay for when you're doing your, your roadway. So I, when we, part of the cost did include fixing the area drain down at 37th Street that isn't quite at grade and taking care of a couple of issues that are already there. And again, ditch is gone, so. The next one was Hillcrest pavement. Again, curb and gutter pavement, ditch is gone, same stuff as before. The construction cost on this one was $733,000 with a total project cost of about 1.1 million. And again, that includes contingencies, utility relocations, and those type of items. On this one, there's an area just east of Hillcrest on 47th that's a particular point of problem. I'm fairly confident that there used to be a culvert there that has been completely buried and disappeared. When you look at all the drainage, there had to be a culvert there at one time, but that's been eliminated. And so we would recommend getting easements and doing a new pipe system to get past a garage that's been built there. And so that's kind of, on this project, that's kind of a unique cost driver on it. The estimated cost for the 27 lots that would front on the project and use it is $40,700 each, which is $216 per month. So it's a touch cheaper than Cozy Drive is, is our estimate on this one. Aurora Park, this is the one, asphalt mat pavement. We would rework all the ditches, so the ditches would remain. The roadways would be widened in some areas because anybody who lives in Aurora Park, they know that there's a few of those streets that they're not close to any kind of normal width, and you can't pass comfortably. You'll probably stop and let somebody go by. At times, there's a few spots that are substandard width, so we would widen it out to a more standard section. And then install seven-inch AC pavement on all the roadways. And again, the driveways would be paved to the property lines. The estimated cost for this one is just short of $2 million with a total project cost of close to $3 million. And the same items as before that are the additional cost drivers. And then ditch maintenance on this, I just wanted to mention, with paved roads, you're not going to have some of the deposition of silt and other stuff that comes off of the roadway right now. Because every time you put sand on the roadway, it's eventually making its way in the ditches. So your long-term ditch maintenance will be less, but it will still be a project that in 20 years or 30 years from now, those ditches are going to start silting in again. It's just the nature of the beast when you have open ditches. So that, that's the downside to this being an asphalt mat pavement project. And the estimated cost for the 70 lot, 75 lots on this is $39,400, which is approximately $208 per month. And this one here, we still do have a couple sizable culvert replacements that we need to do under the roadways. There's still all the ditch that needs to be worked, so there's quite a few items that you, you would think an asphalt mat might be cheaper, but because of the road widening and things, it does add up. So some final thoughts, like I mentioned, Kansas Paving, they've done a lot of work in Bel Air. They provided valuable feedback. Hillcrest and Cozy Drive, when I was looking at them, those two in particular, we ended up raising the prices on based on their feedback. Aurora Park, I was actually very close with my estimate because I, before I gave them information, I put together numbers. And I was within like $1,000 or $2,000 on Aurora Park. But I ended up, Ann and I, we went through the numbers, and we ended up needing to revise those two up based on their feedback. So it was good that we got the contractor involved. It was, it was, it was a good request to, to have them check it because they gave us some feedback that they're the real-world folks that are looking at it. And then we talked a little bit about the curb and gutter and the drainage. And like I said, we have some concerns about whether we can even run storms who are up there, but it would be 50% higher if we had to do curb and gutter out there. It would be around 300 bucks a month to do curb and gutter on Aurora Park. And then, again, I mentioned it earlier, the, the large lot, size of the lots, that's the downside to owning a premium-sized lot is the premium-sized pavement cost. And then also, we have some existing improvements that we have to tear out. So compared to an open field, we don't normally have to deal with that when we're doing a new subdivision. So some extra costs there. So that's my quick breeze through the, through the cost estimates, and I'd take any questions you might have about it.
Yeah, one question I have is, these cost estimates, previously, you had done about a $500,000 cost estimate to bring the, the drainage back to standard where, where it should be. Is that included in these numbers?
Yeah, so Aurora Park, Aurora Park includes all of the, all of the ditch drainage stuff that was included in the original part. That would still all need to be addressed because there's no point in doing the other work if you don't fix that.
So these prices include doing that work?
Well, so on Aurora Park, it's basically same. On the other ones, because you're eliminating the ditches and you're changing, you're changing the scenario quite a bit. It's, it, it does include fixing the concerns, but in a different fashion because you're putting curb and gutter in. So you're, you're changing the, the solution is much different than the existing condition.
Different solution. Okay, okay. So Aurora Park does not have that number in it, included in it, but the others do have.
Aurora Park includes the drainage improvements. It does.
These numbers do?
Yeah, it does. It includes, it includes that cost for fixing all the ditches and reworking them, reshaping them. A lot of them will be, in a lot of cases, will actually be going slightly wider. One of the things that, if you were to actually go through with the project, it would be, there would need to be some coordination with property owners because there's trees and stuff that are encroaching on the street right of way and deciding what to do with those. And which ones do you try and save, or do you just take it out to the property line? I mean, there, there would be some tough discussions if, if we're to widen all these roads out to the full width. So there would probably be, it would be appropriate if you were to pursue that project to actually have some kind of a town hall meeting and discuss with people what, what they're wanting out of it to make sure the finished product is where, where you want to be. But that number there, we, we wanted to make sure it was with the contingencies ever enough. We don't want in a situation where you come back to everybody and say, we said it was going to be this, but it's going to be this. So we tried to make sure we factored in all the likely problems.
Okay, thank you. So just kind of point of order, this is a presentation. I know we have a lot of citizens here from Aurora Park. Council's not going to make any decision about this tonight. This is a presentation just to understand what the study revealed. And then we will probably have a workshop to discuss what we want to do as our next actions, I would guess.
Yeah, and certainly, I'll, I'll mention, the one thing that you could do from this is with this is it might be appropriate to talk to the citizens a little bit and see if it's worth actually writing up a petition, passing it around, doing some mailers, sending them to the residents and say, given this is the likely cost. Before you go through all the effort of going through more workshops and those kind of things, it might be good to do some public outreach with the neighborhoods and see if they have an appetite for it. Because if you, you know, if you can't get over half the people to want to do it, then you're just kind of spinning your wheels.
Yeah.
And so I, I would recommend thinking about those kind of ideas as far as some public outreach and get some feedback from the community in whatever fashion you think is appropriate, whether it be a workshop or whatever.
I think that's a good suggestion. I like that. We, we definitely want the citizens involved in any decision we make here, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Schroder.
Obviously, there's a lot to think about. The first time I've seen this, right? So we'll have lots to think about and talk about it. But when we talk about this further another time, I assume somewhere you have broken out the cost, for example, like, like Aurora Park, the ditches will be a certain percentage of the cost. I'm glad you didn't break that out for us on the sheet. I don't want it right now anyway, but you have all that, I assume, if we wanted the details.
We have spreadsheets with line items and, and, you know, to some degree, you can get overwhelmed with just too many numbers at one time. So we do have some additional information that we could provide at a later point if, if you're interested in that. But we did go through line item, light item, and there's a couple, you know, the generic site clearing issues and those kind of things that encompass a lot of the variables out there. But, and then again, we have contingencies built in for the undiscovered items that we may, we may not have found at this point.
Any other questions for Mr. Kenley?
I do.
Mr. Welch.
You were talking about Tree Top Nursery on Cozy Drive, and did you also account for the fact they own that parking lot there? Because that would give them.
Yeah, and, and, and that's the thing, that's the one thing to consider. They, they have a lot of frontage on that road. And the question is, is, you know, what's. And the question is, is you know, what's fair? They, they, when we have that discussion of actually getting down to a petition with them, they may say, well, two shares is really the fair share. And so if that was the case, it would probably raise it up to about two forty a month. If we, if we got rid of that extra share instead of two twenty-four, it would raise everybody's cost to around two forty.
Okay, most, most of that cozy drive is owned by people that part of Treetop anyway, but.
Well, I know that, yeah, I, I talked to quite a bit with the, uh, with the gentleman at the east end of the cul-de-sac on the south side, about his, uh, travails on getting the water past his house and building his garage and those type of things.
Right. Uh, and on Aurora Park, you said that driveways would be paved, but does that mean with asphalt or concrete?
Uh, since we're doing an asphalt roadway and a lot of them are already asphalt, we'd, we'd, we'd most likely go back with asphalt or like kind of pavement. If they had concrete, we would probably go back with concrete if that's what they already had, but otherwise we would default to asphalt. Unless it was like, like replacing it with something like babe, like the same.
And the same on the other two project, or would they be concrete?
We would, uh, I would plan on doing concrete on those other two. With curb and gutter, it's more traditional to do, uh, concrete drives that above the curb and gutter. So it would be unusual not to do curb and gutter on those driveways.
Okay, and, and the street itself would be asphalt on all these or concrete?
We did asphalt on all of them. Uh, concrete, I mean, you guys know the routine, twenty percent extra, twenty-five percent extra to do concrete. And so we do the math on that, you're starting to close in on three hundred bucks a month, two hundred and seventy-five bucks a month on, on some of these, if you go to concrete. So it, it's a discussion you could have, but, uh, now the one thing, when Ann and I, when in our discussions, since we are looking at asphalt, we would do a little bit thicker asphalt than maybe, because five on five is, uh, what a lot of folks do. But we'd probably do seven on five to try and get some longevity out of that asphalt.
Okay, and then you said there was some kind of downside to the ditches in Aurora Park, but I didn't, just the fact that they would still be ditches?
Just the fact they still exist and.
Okay, so that, so that they would require continuous maintenance, but hopefully not very much, very often.
Yeah, it would be, with the road being there, you're not going to have, uh, the siltation. You're not going to have the, the sand and dirt coming off the road the way you do right now. So you'll see over time, a little bit less work from that, but they're ditches, the spots that erode now by downstream of that channel, you, you could still end up with some erosion there that you might have to maintain periodically. It's difficult to completely stop all of that. So there'll be periodic maintenance on the ditches, it's just the way it is with ditches.
And on those streets in Aurora Park, would it raise the level of the street? So would you try to keep them at the same height they are now?
So what we kind of looked at on that, we, we, it would take some work, but we think most of them are going to need to be widened. So if we can reuse that material as fill to widen them and then put the asphalt on top, we would probably try to keep it great about the same, but just basically take that seven inches off the top and use it to help balance out the fill on the site.
Yeah. That's, that's enough for me today about as far as my information we got. I appreciate you doing this.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. And, and, uh, it's, it, these projects are always difficult, because it always ends up being a lot of money. It, it really is, and, and I know, uh, a lot of folks, uh, asking them to pony up two hundred dollars a month is, is a big ask. So it's, that's a, that's going to be a challenge for some folks to be able to do, so.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Kenley? Thank you, sir, I appreciate the input, and, uh, we'll, uh, certainly have more discussion on this.
Okay, thank you for that.
Next item on the agenda, we have Dakota Zimmerman and Eric Streeker from, uh, Garver to talk about the Woodlawn project, and we are now in phase two of the Woodlawn reconstruction. So Dakota Zimmerman, uh, is here to give us an update on progress and what we can expect to see happening.
Perfect, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Or good evening, sorry, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Lost track of time already, right? Uh, like the mayor said, giving update on Woodlawn Avenue Construction Project. We are in phase two, as I imagine mostly have you seen with the bazillion traffic cones we got and signs and message boards going on. So, uh, thought it'd be a good time to come in here and give you guys an update, what's going on here. As always, want to start off with the safety statement. Uh, the big one obviously is the, the transition. Uh, humans love change, especially a, a pretty large change such as this one. So please be aware of the traffic cones, obey the signs, obey the message boards. Um, I appreciate everyone's willingness to work with us over that two day period of getting that put stuff in place. Uh, not a lot of people realize the challenges it takes to set up these cones where you got active traffic coming and, and doing that concurrently. But I do want to give a huge shout out to the Bel Air P D. Um, they responded very well, even the second day, they sent out more units out there to do education. Um, and so that was pretty instrumental for the workers on site to feel a little more comfort that they're getting backed up by the city, city's police department. So big shout out to Chief Atterbury and his staff for that, thank you. Uh, and this slide I want to put on here, just more reminder for those watching and, and attending here is, uh, the city's done a great job with their website and social media about putting out updates and notifications. And so on their website, on the Woodlawn tab, you can still access, um, updates are coming, this phase two is on there. There's still the video from the project kickoff meeting, where it kind of gives a high level view of the entire project from start to finish. And then of course, that contact card, which individuals have been using it, which is great. I, uh, recommend them to continue using it as a phone number and email. Those, uh, that phone number goes to Marshall Bishop in our office and that email comes to me. So we respond as quickly as we can to get that information to whoever may be using it. That's, that's what it's there for, so I'm glad people are using that, but just wanted to do a friendly reminder that it's there for them. Quick review of our milestones to date, uh, we went to the utility coordination project last year through September into November. Um, notice perceived this project was number November fifteenth. And, uh, phase one was completed February eighteenth, and then phase two started February twenty-first, that Monday, that's when the traffic control started. So after you take a day or two of them setting up traffic control, they've been in phase two, oh, roughly a week or so. So it's, it's just getting started and, uh, phase two is the biggest, biggest challenge of this project. It's, it's the, uh, most work, biggest section of Woodlawn. So it's going to be, it's going to be, uh, fun and challenging, but we wish to get through as quickly as possible while maintaining quality. And then once we get to phase three, we got traffic going north and south through Woodlawn corridor, it's going to be a lot easier on everybody. So to date, we have charged forty-nine working days. Uh, you see that there's contracted three hundred and thirty-three originally, there was three hundred and twenty, but with the changers that we've had increased thirteen working days on there. So that puts us at thirteen percent complete. Um, per their schedule, we're still on schedule. Uh, you know, we had that weather that impacted us through January and February, so that slowed things down a little bit. But the weather this week looks gorgeous, so they're taking the full advantage of that and have their milling operations going on as we hope they are, so. And I want to give another big shout out that railroad permit, that is outstanding, that got done in the amount of time it did. Um, very, very fast track, so I think that was just a team effort and everyone's part of getting that accomplished. Uh, so it's very comforting to have that in place to move forward. And just wanted to give another recap of phase one is mostly the drainage structure just north of Quill Ridge, working on the side of that, and then doing the, uh, asphalt widening along the west edge. So there's some photos of this going through here. See, they're not going to have porn on here. Yep. This drainage structure, you should imagine there's a lot of rebar on there. I'm sure Eric loves counting every single bar, because we have to, but, uh, it kind of, kind of gives you an idea of, of what the, what goes into this and how much rebar it is. Uh, so there's quite a bit there, they're working on that. That you can see here, they're actually paving that west edge, uh, with that shoe fly here. And then coming back and, uh, putting some seed and mulch down and tacking slurry to, uh, meet our erosion control requirements per K D O, so button that up. So in a nutshell recap, that was phase one activities. Moving into phase two, want to give a, an update on the, the layout of this, so everyone's familiar. Phase two A is what we're in right now. Basically, they're working on the east half of Woodlawn, except for the railroad, it kind of tapers through and then comes back. They'll be working on that for the next eight to ten months is what we're thinking. So majority of this year, they'll, will be in this configuration. Uh, phase two B is continuing east half, more in the north and south portions. And then two C and two D is working the intersection of forty-fifth and Woodlawn. I know most of you have seen this a lot, but I'll give it a quick run through. Working south is on the left side of the page, north on the right side of page, thirty-seventh. Again, they're working on the east side, we do have north and southbound traffic, south of Thirty-Ninth Street. But as soon as you hit that, you start going to northbound traffic only, all the way up to forty-fifth. There's Quill Ridge up to Danbury, this section right here is the primary section they've been milling off. It's about an eight inch mill, taking that old asphalt out. Uh, but we have northbound traffic all the way through here, continuing up to Forty-Fifth Street, and then even working north of Forty-Fifth. When we get to phase two C and two D, which is expected later this year, we're going to have westbound traffic only on Forty-Fifth Street, and then north, southbound traffic, north of, uh, Forty-Fifth. And then obviously just northbound traffic coming up there through the Woodlawn corridor. But the areas in orange is where we'll be working, taking each of those quadrants out and doing it in pieces. And then when we go to two D, it'll be filling in those remaining areas, but we'll have westbound traffic only through that area as well. Once we're done with phase two A through D, getting to phase three, we have north and southbound traffic all the way through Woodlawn and east and westbound traffic all the way through Forty-Fifth. So I'm sure everyone wants to get to phase three as soon as possible, and we're definitely going to do our best to get there. So current activities, like I said, we've been in phase two about a week or so, so it's really just kind of getting started. Uh, but the big task was getting the traffic control and get it up right, get it to where it makes sense. Um, traffic control is flexible, so we do a lot. Eric actually does a lot of viewing how the public's responding to this. The police department gives a lot of good input, what they need, think needs to be added or removed. Obviously, you don't want to sign every ten feet, because then you start looking at them, it's just too much to take in. So we're marring that very, very closely, so everyone's safe. I mean, that's the ultimate goal here. So the big things is utility work, that storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water line. Uh, there's a ton of storm sewer on this job, so they'll be getting, going at that. Don't even start a little early on that to get a head start, they have some crews available. So if we can get them in there, let's get them going and, and keep this thing moving. And then of course pavement work. So we'll get that old asphalt milled off, like I said, it's about eight inch, do some dirt work, get those elevations all back in spot, back in the right place, and then start paving out there. And so start seeing some fruits to the labor of what's going on out there. And I even, at the beginning of this project, I did a drone video of this whole corridor. So as we get more progress, I'll get that drone out and fly it out again and share that with us next time I come in here. So just give you some photos, what's going on, we got the milling machine here operating, they are hauling these millings off. Most of that stuff will get recycled, uh, and used in future asphalt, so it's not just waste. Got some guys work on the water main, and then of course our storm sewer work going on here. And just another photo, give you guys a grasp of what's going on here. And you see this, there's a pond there, so we're just north of Quill Ridge, but it doesn't take them very long to get that stuff stripped off and, and get it out there. So as soon as we start seeing some dirt work moving around and, and get that stuff compacted in, we're going to see some new rock and new pavement coming in shortly. So what's next, like I said, phase two activities, it's going to be work on the drainage structure on the pavement and the storm sewer all the way through there. Um, and the water line, so we'll get a lot of those activities here moving forward. And then, uh, look at phase three, hopefully by the end of this year. If not, it may bleed in early next year with the weather. I don't want to speak on the contractor's behalf, and hopefully we have an amazing summer that we can get a lot of production done. But, uh, like I said, it's about eight to ten months what their schedule shows to be in this phase, so majority of this year we'll be in here. And with that, I will stand forward, any questions you may have?
Well, I was pleased to see you put the, uh, wall up the last couple of days, and that, I think that will help a lot with traffic and protect the workers as well, so that's a good thing.
Yep, and there's some extra delineators, we're still getting on with the contractor, get those in place, so we have everything we need and it's an ongoing process, I appreciate that.
Mr. Welsh, did you have some questions?
I've got several. Is somebody going out on a regular basis and resetting those cones? Cause I know it's a lot of them getting knocked over.
There is a constant effort, actually Eric was just, uh, about forty-five minutes ago out there moving type three barricades that someone either moved or the contractor left over. Um, you'd be surprised how many of those get hit or knocked over and have to get to a backup. I think the police department last year on the project reset a lot of the cones, because someone came through in the middle of the night and, and must have knocked a few of them over. So, yeah, it's an ongoing thing, and we always have a, a rule internally is we always look at that first thing in the morning, we drive on, drive the whole avenue, look at it, and then before we leave, and hopefully nothing doesn't happen between the hours of seven P M and six A M. But if it does, um, we got the, you know, emergency response, uh, the police department has our phone numbers, we can get out there and help out.
Here's a couple of things I'd like to see if you can figure out a way to fix. On the, uh, asphalt, you had it on the west side, north of Forty-Fifth. It comes to a square end right before the driveway, and I've noticed people already driven off of that. And I don't know if that we can move the road over just a little bit, if we want to make that wider when they come in, or set a cone up there or something, so they know it's square end.
There's actually a hole there now.
Yeah.
Can I get that presentation back up, just make sure I'm following you exactly? I think I know what you're talking about, I just want to confirm, thank you. You're talking right here?
No, farther north.
Oh, up here? I think that actually taped. Yep, yep, you're talking this one.
Yeah, on the west side.
Yep.
You can see the driveway there, we're playing the driveway and your orange lines, it's, there's nothing there on the side of the road. It's very narrow for people going through and then driving along.
Yeah, and, uh, Eric and I can dive in on that and make sure that we get that either touched up or fixed up.
While you have that up there, I've heard several people tell me that they think northbound is closed near the intersection, because the very first thing they see is a very big huge road closed sign. Is there something we could do to mark that so people know they can turn north?
Let's see here, I think it'll, photo you're talking about. You're talking about this?
No, on the other side of the intersection.
Other side, yeah.
Okay.
Turn your camera a hundred eighty degrees.
Hundred eighty degrees, that's what you're saying. I will drive there as soon as I leave here.
Yeah, it threw me the first time, too, I knew it was supposed to be open, but I pulled up to the intersection, I'm looking to my right to see what's going on. And there's this graphic sign that says road closed, and I'm like, I thought it was supposed to be open.
I hear you, I hear you.
The same problem exists at Thirty-seventh and Woodlawn. When you're coming up Woodlawn, approaching the intersection at Thirty-seventh Street, you're thinking, I think the road's open northbound, but you're staring at a giant sign that says road is closed, uh, which I personally find confusing.
Yeah, and, and speaking of Thirty-seventh, is it possible to put a no turn on red sign there or something? Cause people are trying to s- turn on red, and they're going three quarters of the way through the intersection before they realize that, well, there's no place. Um, you know, somebody's going to hit me doing that, I think we're going to have an accident there if we aren't careful.
Yeah, no, I love this feedback.
All right, so.
Those are my concerns, thank you.
Absolutely.
Those are small enough, I think you're doing a good job so far.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I'll drive, uh, if there's any more of those on sale, I'll drive right after this job, and me and Eric will get that addressed tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Any, any other council members have questions for Mr. Zimmerman? Very nice, thank you for the information, it's very, very good. And I was wondering how many days we had, so I saw it on your slide, I, okay, now I know.
There you go, thank you.
Move on to citizens' concerns, and I have two cards I've received from citizens to speak. So the first one will be Ms. Bonnie Stinson.
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Stinson, I live at thirty-eight hundred North Harding. And I just wanted to make some comments tonight about the, uh, proposed paving of our gravel roads. The, um, this whole thing is kind of snowballed from a petition asking to have the milling that we just saw being milled up there on thirty, uh, Woodlawn, used on our roads. And we complained about the dust, and we were told that we were being too picky to staff, we were bashing them. And then it became a situation of being told half truths at times, and I hope you guys, whatever decision you made coming up, that it's not really going to impact us so much. Two hundred dollars a month is a lot. I've been diagnosed with a tumor in my back of my head, I'm going to have to have MRIs every six months, and this just came out. Um, I don't think that there's a lot of people that can afford stuff like this. Especially not when it's at a time when pandemic has hit and costs of everything have gone up. I know the city wants to plan on paying some of it, or I hope they would. I don't know if that's going to be enough, but that's a chunk of change for some of us, and especially for, for my husband and I. Um, I did want to make a comment about two thousand eighteen, you guys put fifty-third You guys put 53rd Street ahead of any other gravel roads in our town. And the benefiting people of that was the City of Greenwich. And you motioned to have it accepted and you seconded it, Mr. Mayor. So the two of you actually put 53rd Street ahead of our road, and they rebuilt 53rd Street for $10,000. And then now we're paying them $4,500 a year so that they can maintain that gravel road of about three-fourths of a mile, plus another 5,300 on a pro rate. And if you don't believe me, I've got the appropriations. I'm not making it up. I also think that you guys were told that this, um, rock that's being used was double the cost. They were using it in 2017, KGE Rock, that was new in 2018. $16 for a ton is what it was back then. And it's pretty much what it is now. I think $16.90 maybe. I think that, if I can look at this, so. The way I take this is we're kind of being financially sanctioned, I guess, for submitting a petition and complaining that we wanted our roads kind of less dusty. And because of that, we're going to be paying for it. And that doesn't give a real cozy feel to people that would like to see the city do things for them as residents. It doesn't seem right that you would punish us that way. But I know you're going to make some type of decision. You're not going to spend $70,000 just to throw it out the window. So I'm begging you, please, not to make us hurt so much. I don't know what else to say, but thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Carolyn Guzman.
I'm Carolyn Guzman. I live at 529 East 39th Street North. Um, in some of the previous meetings where you discussed the roads in Aurora Park, um, it's been referred to that, uh, all, all divisions, subdivisions, the residents have to pay for those roads, um, through specials. This isn't the same thing. One difference is that, uh, those divisions start in an empty field. And we have roads. And I assume that those roads were originally paid for by the residents. It's, it, it's not the same thing. We didn't decide to buy homes knowing that we would be paying for streets. We bought our homes knowing that we'd be living on a gravel road. And which, at least when I moved there, they were well-maintained with limited dust. Some, in the workshop in December, there was discussion about, uh, the number of retired people that live in that area. Uh, some, someone suggested a rebate program. There's going to have to be a lot of money in that program. Because I would, I would guess that at least 50% of our residents in that area are retired, um, or nearing retirement. In my, on my block alone, in the nine homes, five of those people are retired. Across the street, there are six homes, four of those people are retired. It's, some, one of them has a double lot. Uh, it's, it's just not reasonable to ask these people that have been paying taxes to the City of Bel Air for 30-plus years to then have to do this on top of that. I'm in favor of, uh, reducing the speed limit in our area, changing the product on the road to reduce the dust. I know that that's going to create a washboard effect. I don't care, I'm going to be going a lot slower. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to council member reports. Dr. Schroder, would you like to begin?
I agree vacation, and I'm disappointed Woodlawn was not done when I got back. So, uh, other than that, I have no report.
Did you need a longer vacation? Mr. David?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
I don't have anything tonight.
Mr. Welch?
I just want to remind everybody to pray for the people in the Ukraine, that they can get a resolution that everybody can be happy with.
Thank you. Uh, move on to mayor's report. I received a letter from, uh, Brent Turstrip from, uh, Kansas Department of Transportation, uh, announcing that they have approved the, uh, joint request for K254 corridor study. So that study will begin with, by KDOT sometime this year. And we look forward to seeing what they come up with on the management plan for K254. And I really do appreciate all the different, uh, communities that supported that because that was a group effort from Cedric County, I believe Keachai donated to that, uh, Tawanda, Benton, uh, El Dorado, uh, Butler County was the biggest, bigger supporter of it. So it's a great, great thing. I just signed a proclamation to designate March as American Red Cross Month. The nationwide blood shortage continues. It's a critical issue in the nation and in Kansas. I encourage anyone who can, please donate blood. There is an opportunity here in Bel Air this Saturday, March 5th, at Church of the Resurrection. You can sign up online at, uh, redcrossblood.org or call 800-733-26, I'm sorry, 2767. That's 733-2767. So as everyone knows, and, and council member Welch, uh, talked about the folks in Ukraine. This is just a, a very sad day in world affairs. We've seen tyrants like this do things like this before. We've seen it with Hitler, we've seen it with Stalin, we've seen it with, uh, Napoleon. Those are all just horrible blood baths that, that millions of people died as a result of. So, um, and then last Friday, uh, Mr. Putin even threatened Finland and Sweden. So his ambitions for, his ambitions for expanding Russia have just only been in Bolton. So, um, tomorrow is Ash Wednesday. Pope Francis, as well as Archbishop of Canterbury, Justin Welby, and many other Christian leaders have called tomorrow to be a day of prayer and fasting for the Ukrainian people and for peace. Our own Bishop Kimmy, who lives in Bel Air, has called for prayers for Ukraine. I urge people of all faiths to mark tomorrow as the day of prayer and fasting. Maybe by the grace of God, we can avoid Putin repeating the history of Napoleon, Hitler, Stalin, and other similar madmen. Pray for peace. On Thursday, uh, February 24th, I attended the CCUA meeting along with Councilmember Greg David and Council President Justin Smith. We approved an expansion of the office for CCUA in an effort to address some safety and privacy concerns. There are more safety issues that need to be addressed, but this was an easy one to tackle. And on February 29th, I attended a K254 corridor development subcommittee on safety. We discussed ideas on how to engage our high school students to help them gain a higher appreciation for safe driving habits. And I understand Councilmember Greg David just had a birthday, and Council President Justin Smith has one coming up. So happy birthday to both Councilmember David and Council President Smith. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Lasher?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to, uh, send out a special thanks to our tree board. Uh, we were notified, um, through the Arbor Day Foundation that the city received the, uh, Tree City USA Award for 2021. And so it's thanks to them and, uh, staff and public works that we get that award. Um, a lot of things happen in the background, um, uh, that helps us with, with, uh, receiving that award. So, uh, again, thank you to our tree board for all their help. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to item 12, uh, council ordinance change zoning classifications from R1 to residential R4. So the planning commission received PW Renovations LLC request to rezone the property at their February 19th, many, is it the 19th? Is that the right date? 10th, okay, 10th, I thought that was odd. Okay, at the same meeting, planning commission held a public hearing where interested parties and citizens were given the opportunity to be heard. There was no one attended, so, uh, except for the agent of the applicant, who appeared, who appeared in favor or against. So following the public hearing, the, uh, planning commission studied the material provided and applicants considered the evidence and discussed the rezoning request in relation to the city zoning regulations and the golden factors of zoning. Having thoroughly reviewed the issue, planning commission voted seven to zero. We do have a full slate of planning commissions. The first time I think of, I've seen that since I've been on council, been up here. Okay. To recommend rezoning of property from E1 to the state, this real estate to E4 residential. The zoning ordinance now comes before council for approval. So do we have any questions for staff? There are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Schroder?
I'll make a motion to accept an ordinance changing the zonal classification to R, from R1 estate residential to R4 residential on certain property location within the corporate city limits of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, Chapelanning 6th, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Schroder to approve, to accept, and a second by Mr. Smith. This is a, uh, ordinance that will require a voice roll call. Uh, so I'll ask our, our, uh, city clerk to call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Jim Benage?
Aye.
Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent, and Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And motion carries, Mayor.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next item is B, and the planning commission reviewed request for an LED message board signed to an existing sign pole base located in a utility easement in C1. So the commercial zoning district at their February 10th meeting, the, uh, commission found that there were limited impact and appreciated the upgrade to the new sign. Planning commission voted seven to zero to recommend that council approve the LED message board contingent upon 60-day review by planning commission. Ordinance to approve conditional use now comes before council and approval. Uh, are there any questions for staff? And one question I had is, this is in the right of way, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there, is that going to be any issue with that in, uh, now or in future with, uh, Woodlawn?
Not with Woodlawn, not with the Woodlawn project. They've already kind of planned all that out, and it doesn't interfere with Woodlawn. However, as you're going, if, um, if it does become an issue because it's in the right of way, the owner has a clear understanding that they'll be expected to move the sign as necessary.
Okay, all right. And it's in the Woodlawn right of way, is that correct?
I'd like to clarify a little bit.
Okay.
It is not in the Woodlawn right of way.
Okay.
It is in a, it, it is in an easement. For a, a utility easement.
A utility easement, okay.
So similar to utility easements in most people's backyards, we're not, permanent structures are not allowed.
Right.
Since it is existing, then it's, is not a hindrance to any current city utilities. The owner is aware that if anything would come up into the future, they would need to relocate at their expense. And representatives, the owner, as well as the contractors here, if you have questions for them.
All right, I just want to make sure we understood that.
Yes. No, it, it, it was planned, and it's not, it's not a hindrance to the project moving forward.
They're not moving, it, it's, it's already in that position, they're just putting a different sign.
The sign on the left is the current sign that is in place. They're actually keeping the same pole, taking the top of it off and adding a new LED message board in a different orientation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
You want to, Mr. Smith?
I was going to say, I think that looks very nice. I think the 60-day review is designed in case there's any issues with like brightness or things like that. I think we've had that before, and so that's all, sounds really good to me. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve an ordinance allowing a conditional use on certain property zone C1 located within the corporate city limits of the City of Bel Air.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David to accept the, uh, change ordinance. Uh, this is also a, uh, ordinance, so we have a roll call vote on this one as well.
I get to ask my question.
Certainly, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't want to cut you off. Go right ahead.
We had a motion before I got a chance to talk. What are our limitations on the brightness of that sign? And if it gets too bright in the future, you know, if somebody goes out there and tweaks it in the, you know, after 60 days?
I'm going to defer that question.
Okay, well, I, yeah.
So there's a couple of options. Uh, the operator has the option to go into the software and adjust the brightness down depending on the, the time of day. What we're going to do in this situation, we're going to install a light sensor that has eight stock settings. And the light sensor is going to check the lux, which is the light intensity, and bring down the brightness accordingly. Now, as an example, at night, it would bring down the brightness to about 5% brightness. If you had an overcast day, you know, no sun for a couple of days, it would adjust it accordingly. So this is going to take the operator's intervention out of it, it's going to automatically do that.
Okay, my, my concern is there's residences right across the street. And from what you're telling me, it still could change in the future. So what's our control over that in the future?
What could change in the future?
The brightness, because you said there's multiple settings. If somebody goes in there or a power outage causes it to reset.
Well, if there's a power outage, we would have, the operator have the ability to go into the software and just adjust manually the brightness down.
Okay, but I'm.
So the, the, the purpose of the light sensor is to automatically adjust the brightness based on the intensity at any given time of the day.
Mr. Mayor?
My question is what control the city has to force you to do that if somebody complains?
So at that point, um, we have, our city inspector can go out under, during the 60-day window and make sure that it's generally being operated in a way that doesn't disrupt, um, quiet enjoyment of neighbors. And so he would drive by within the first 60 days. And if it needs to be turned down, he'd work with the owner to get it turned down. After that, um, as complaints come up, we have, um, minimum, we have a, a Nits range, which is a term that defines brightness. And he could, um, go out and depending on factors like other signs in the area, lighting in the area, determine that it's too bright, and then use code enforcement to come in and regulate how bright that sign is from the city perspective.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Do we have something that we can use in the future to make sure that it, something doesn't happen?
We do have our code.
Okay, as long as it's in the code and we can control that if it gets out of, out of whack.
The, the, the feel of this is going to change as this road gets completed, right? So this is, for a year and a half, this is going to feel different than it does, it will. And whenever you get the sign put up in 30 days or whatever your plan is, right? So I, I appreciate that, that input, that we would have some, some information or some options if we needed to. I hope we never need to, because I think we should, we should be working with you and, and that's the way it should go, so. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm excited. I mean, always good to see modernization, right? A little, little update, make a little bit better. So I'm, I'm excited. I'm sure, you know, the automating of it, I'm sure will work great. It'll probably rarely break, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. So I'm, I'm glad to see, uh, some improvements.
I have no problem with the sign. I just wanted to make sure that, that people across the street, since it is residential, wouldn't get blinded at night.
Sir?
And that we can, that we can control that in the future if something happens.
Yeah, thank you. Sir, could you identify yourself with the record?
Yeah, I'm Brent Grismore with Cerus LED. So we're, I'm with the sign manufacturer.
Okay.
Live in Kansas City, the manufacturer's out of, uh, Boston.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions or concerns before we go to a vote? There are none, I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Jim Benage?
Aye.
Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent, and Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item D, this is an ordinance, uh, for conditional use on certain property. So the planning commission reviewed request for a private swimming pool in an R5 residential zoning district at their February 10th meeting. They were busy that meeting. As part of the As part of the conditional use process, a notification of hearing was published and, and concerned parties should, could come to that meeting to express their concerns. The planning commission did vote seven to zero to recommend the council approve the private swimming pool as presented. The ordinance approved the council. Conditional use now comes before council for approval. Any questions, staff? Hearing none, this is another.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. David.
So, so what, what is different about this one versus a normal swimming pool? Sorry, I missed that.
Um, this was a grading issue. From what I can tell, it was a grading issue, but Ann can weigh in a little bit more on why they had to apply.
There, there really is no difference in this.
Excuse me for just a second. Could we close the door, please? Thank you. Getting really hard to hear.
I understand. There, there really is no difference in this pool, in this pool from the other ones that we have seen. Since it is in an R five district, it does not specifically allow for swimming pools in backyard, so they have to come and request a permit from the city to build it. And that, part of that process is notifying the neighbors to see if any of the neighbors have any concerns. So that is why it is before you tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a conditional use CON dash two two dash zero one on certain properties owned R five located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and second by Dr. Schroder. Any additional questions or discussion?
I will add that this one had some variances due to impervious area requirements, but the engineer confirmed that those would be okay. So not only was it in an R five, but it also had some drainage concerns that had to be reviewed as well.
Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Jim Benage.
Aye.
Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent and Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item D, it's dedicating streets and other public ways for utility easement. So on February 10th, the planning commission meeting, reviewed block 49 LLC's request to replat approximately 22.76 acres of R five residential. Public hearing was held, no parties wishing to speak. While in public hearing, the planning commission considered the evidence and voted seven to zero to approve the final plat without changes. Final action is now before the councils to accept and dedicate a public use for easements, right of way, et cetera. Any questions, staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make the motion to accept the dedication within the final plat for Skyview at block 49 second and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David and second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussions or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Jim Benage.
Aye.
Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent and Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
And that motion carries five to zero. Okay, so also at the February 10th meeting, planning commission viewed block 49 LLC's request to replat approximately 12.44 acres of C two commercial with a PUD. There are no parties wishing to speak at the public hearing. So following public hearing, the planning commission reviewed the evidence and voted seven to zero to approve the final plat without changes. Final action is now before council to accept the dedicated public use for ease, public uses for easements, right of ways. Are there any questions, staff?
Everything around this is commercial or is owned that way?
What's south of it is all zone commercial? That's basically, that's Tierra Verde. And then what's north of it?
I can speak to this. Garver is doing the, the final plat for this and I'm familiar with the project. So the, the area south, as he said, is also C two, similar to this with PUD. North of this is actually going to be single family residential and west of this is going to be single family residential. The individuals that purchased the area north of this bought it knowing that this was going to be platted or developed into this. They bought it from the folks that are developing this ground, so they were, they were involved in that discussion. And then the developer that owns this property owns the single family to the west.
And we've got a wall and bushes around it, is that right?
Yeah, well, there'll be a, there'll be a six foot high wall, masonry wall around the whole perimeter of it that, that's, butts the residential uses and then the landscape buffer is also required by code.
Okay. And the only, will there be any trees anywhere or is it all just bushes?
No, those are trees. The, the, the larger, those, those will probably be just ornamental trees though. They're not going to be big trees, they'll be ornamental trees, but there'll be trees lining that perimeter.
I'd like to see some trees somewhere in the parking lot, but I'm not going to yell about that.
Yeah.
It seems like a big parking lot for storage units, is that typical?
Well, so the parking lot is actually RV outdoor storage.
Oh, okay.
So yeah. That's going to be outdoor storage and this project was developed originally with the assumption that it would be commercial with a certain amount of impervious area based on it being commercially developed. And you'll notice there's a pond in the southwest corner and we had to add that because of the amount of impervious area we generated, we did need to put that in to get us back under the predeveloped flow that the ponds were designed to handle. So we've added that little small pond to take just enough of the peak off for the other ponds to handle it.
Okay, so this is not going to be high traffic then, since that's RV parking?
Yeah, no, no, this is, that's just going to be people going parking RVs and then leaving them. And we've actually made a couple tweaks on the, the final plan that where there'll be some park spots for people to park, like if you got a antique car, some car that you're wanting to, to, that you're, you're rebuilding or whatever, there'll be spots for storing, storing vehicles, some cars too, is what we're looking at maybe doing, but we haven't finalized that design. This is our initial concept.
There are no, no additional driveways off of the Tierra Verde? I guess there's no road there, is there?
No, we, the developer didn't want to have a connection into there and for security purposes, you want to be able to have a secure site. So the, the, we do have an emergency gate proposed if that, if that's necessary, that's where we would make that connection if there's a second access desired by the fire department. It would be through that emergency gate on the south, but that'll be locked all the time and won't be accessible. And because this, it's got storage units, buildings, that's actually required to be manned office. It has to be, a, a permanent resident has to be living there 24/7 management for the, for a storage unit facility. So there'll actually be somebody living in the office building.
Are there any outdoor lighting fixtures, really tall, bright lights that are going to be out in the middle of the parking lot that would be incompatible with the residential area around it?
Well, like there was commentary before, the city does have requirements as far as amount of lighting that's allowed to go onto adjacent properties and, and that'll be a function of the design. We won't have any lights right at the parameters and there, they'll be, they'll have hoods on them to keep light, the light angled down so it doesn't go onto adjacent properties outside of, you know, any levels that are allowed by the code. But that'll be part of the final electrical design would be to make sure that the lighting is in compliance with city's requirements.
That's not part of the zoning.
No, it's not part of the plating and zoning. It's, it's the, the, the PUD calls out that it has to meet the requirements and I think there's a, some generic language in there, but it's, we're not into actual design at this point.
And it's currently zoned commercial and it's being replatted as commercial with PUDs that?
Yeah, it's, yeah, to do, to do this kind of use, the C two requires a PUD, as I understand. So it was C one and now it's being changed to C two and the city's code requires it to have a PUD associated with it since it's C two.
This developer ready to go with this?
We are already done with the water plans and I'll be turning those in soon. But the water plans are done and the preliminary grading is all complete. We're just waiting to get the final word, but yeah, he'll, he'll be blowing and going as soon as he gets the opportunity. He's, he's eager to do the project.
And did you say that this passed the planning commission unanimously?
Yes.
Okay, I know they're very thorough and probably asked you a lot more questions than they are, so I'll probably limit mine as a result of that.
But the one thing it's changed since then, the one thing that was, ended up being asked that the developer agreed to do is, it's, it's kind of an unusual ask, but is to build the sidewalk along Webb Road there to connect into the sidewalk, you can see on the bottom of the page. They said, well, let's go ahead and build the sidewalk across the front there. So if other developments occur, we're kind of laying the, laying the path for future sidewalk going to the north and developers said that would be no problem to add that in, so they're excited to go on.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the dedications within the final plat for Skyview at block 49 third with PUD overlay and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and second by Dr. Schroder. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Jim Benage.
Aye.
Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent and Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
That motion carries five to zero. Move on to item E, this is a dedication of streets and other public ways of service, utility easements and land dedicated for public use, shown on the final plat for this A. So at the February 10th meeting, planning commission reviewed the city of Bel Air and developers' request to replat approximately 13.15 acres of R six residential and C one commercial. They held a public hearing and following the hearing, the planning commission voted seven to zero to approve the final plat without changes. Final action is now before the city council to accept the dedicated public use for easements, right of ways. And are there any questions, staff?
I'm just curious, did they end up getting more land out of this usable land than they thought? Because it looks like they're asking for an abandonment of a right of way up at the top. It doesn't really matter to them to accept this, I'm just curious.
Are you referring to the very top?
Well, the diagonal swath through there, that's, lower portion of that was, said something about being, they're requesting it to be abandoned. Yes.
That is the, who is it, West Star, Everdy, it's a power company easement, it's, there, it cannot be abandoned.
Well, it looked to me like they were going to narrow it.
Um, I.
Not a total abandonment, but.
Oh, yes, they did ask that the plat that, in the future, they check and review that pipeline easement to make sure that the scope of it is correct because their survey records don't match the pipeline company survey, but they're willing to proceed, understanding that once the pipeline does their review, which could take forever, that that could be, they will abandon anything that's outside of the scope of their, their easement. That's what's written into the plat.
Claim a little bit more land if possible.
Correct, exactly.
Don't blame them, just asking.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Schroder.
I'll make a motion to accept dedications within the final plat for L C and authorize the, authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Schroder and second by Mr. Welch. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. I think this is the last roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Jim Benage.
Aye.
Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
Dr. Joel Schroder.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent and Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
And that motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item F, this is an agreement for professional services with Garver. So it's February 1st meeting, council accepted a bid from Kansas paving to reconstruct 47th Street. City staff typically provides construction observation for services on projects that are funded through the capital improvement reserve fund. Construction observation is important to ensure that the project gets constructed according to city standards. However, staff is currently working on several other projects and does not have the time to properly observe the construction on this project. Staff recommends hiring Garver to observe the construction. Our city here, engineer is here to answer any questions. And I think this is an appropriate use of, of off, offloading some staff, so.
I agree, and I think we came in under budget for the street, so part of the cost of this would be covered by what we had budgeted for the street anyway. I'll make a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with Garver for the 47th Street reconstruction in the amount of $19,537.50 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr., or by Mr. Welch and a second by Dr. Schroder. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. So item H is an agreement with Skyview at block 49 LLC concerning development of Skyview block 49 second addition. So every new development without a PUD, the city requires a development agreement to be negotiated and approved. This agreement spells out in writing the responsibilities of each party during the construction and thereafter. Agreement is filled plat for future reference, filed with the plat for future reference. And staff and developer have agreed upon language contained in this agreement and is now ready for final approval by, approval by the city council. Questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask that this agreement, if, if it is approved, that the motion be that approved with engineer's final review, I think our engineer may have a couple of minor tweaks to certain requirements of the developer's agreement and it would be nice to have her make those small adjustments after approval, if council would be comfortable with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Is there an urgency to adopting this tonight or should we just wait until the modifications are made?
Generally, either way is fine. Generally, when we approve the plat, we send the developer's agreement as well. So they have both and we have that protection of anything happening, we have both. However, as the developer has to come back and ask for certain improvements, that might be a time to impose a developer's agreement, but really they, it should be in tandem with the, with the plat. So either way is, is fine.
So just, so I understand clearly the plat won't be filed for probably a couple of weeks because it requires a lot of signatures, right? I'm sorry?
Yeah, it could take a couple of weeks to get all the signatures.
Okay, so we would have time to put this on the agenda for March, the next March meeting and, and it could still be filed with the plat at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to table the agreement concerning the development of Skyview at block 49 second addition.
I'll second.
Motion to table by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. So is there a needed for executive session this evening? Okay, move on to item 14, so discussion of future issues. So a regular scheduled workshop is March 8th at 6:30 PM. I want to make sure that'll work for everyone. City manager has scheduled capital improvements for 2022 to be the topic. Based on recommendations from he and Ted, council will review proposed dollar amounts to be spent for water, sewer, street improvements this year. And Ann will have recommendations on project costs for council to consider. So if you've been able to. So, have you been able to use your new software to come up with these recommendations?
It's not quite ready yet.
Oh, how are we gonna have good, solid recommendations?
It's not quite ready yet, there's been a few delays. There's been a few delays with the GIS, getting that coordinated between the city and PEC, so not quite ready yet, but it will be, I'm working on it with PEC, they do know that we're supposed to be presenting in March and they will have some kind of, we're, we're supposed to be talking and getting some rough ideas as far as what's going on, but I will not have a specific list.
Okay.
One of the concerns is with the Woodlawn project going on, I hesitate to do too many residential streets adjacent to Woodlawn and arterial streets around Woodlawn because those are being used fairly heavily with Woodlawn being partially closed, so that will be an item of discussion at the March workshop. But PEC should be ready to present to city council in their April meeting regarding the results of the study and recommend, and further recommendations.
So, how will that work with your recommendations for projects this year?
My number one recommendation is 53rd Street, as that continues to deteriorate.
Surprise, surprise.
And, and discussing with Ted earlier today, that does take a chunk of the budget, so that is my number one recommendation. We are looking at some treatments to streets to help preserve and maintain further, but as I said, I, I hesitate to do too many. The next neighborhood is Summit Hill, which is directly adjacent to Woodlawn and those folks are putting up with quite a bit with the Woodlawn construction, so it will definitely be, you know, and kind of an item of open discussion with council and if council chooses to continue with the program for, you know, upgrading and preserving our streets, we can certainly make it happen, but just definitely something to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you. Any other things we need to talk about at workshop?
I think that's plenty.
I think it's plenty too. But I'm fine, people have other ideas, so, okay. So, that, that's our normally scheduled time, everybody, that's okay with everyone? I wanna make sure, okay, very good. At that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. David, is that, oh, it's Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero, we are adjourned.